Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this business meeting for the council for the Borough of Gettysburg for Tuesday, November 12, 2024. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you, everybody. There's no announcements this evening, so we'll get right into the agenda. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the November 12, 2024 agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And would anybody care to make the motion on approving the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of the Borough Council meeting of October 15, 2024, council public hearing on October 28, 2024, and the Borough Council budget work sessions held on October 21, October 28, and November 4, 2024, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections, omissions, or changes? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's going to bring us to our first public comment section of the evening. We ask that members of the public use the podium. Please state your name and your address of residence, and we ask that you limit yourself to five minutes. This first section of the agenda is restricted to items that appear on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak on another topic, you can do that at our second public comment section at the end of the meeting. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to current and old business. We start with the Planning Department, and Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of the report was provided electronically. In addition to the material there, just reiterating, the planning commission is working on these zoning ordinance, going through the comprehensive rezoning. That process is getting to a point where we will begin the actual Phase III of the project, where it would come to the council. Once it is at that point, staff will be notifying you. We provide a timeline, assuming we have a recommendation in December. With regards to tonight's, I guess, motion, that's regarding the Gateway Mini-Mart. That's the Canoco Gas Station location. I do not believe a representative is here, but was previously present for the public hearing. Staff's available for additional questions we can hopefully answer.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitmore? All right, would anyone care to make the motion in front of us?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 111224-1, approving the request of Robbie Singh, applicant for an intended intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, license number R-21262, from previously approved licensed premises located at 985 Baltimore Pike and Cumberland Township, Adams County, Pennsylvania, to the proposed premises located at 517 Baltimore Street within the Borough of Gettysburg, the receiving municipality, consistent with an application for such liquor license intermunicipal transfer either filed or to be filed by the applicant with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any last-minute questions for Mr. Whitmore? Thank you, sir. Mrs. English.
Thank you. My report is in your folder, and we did... Oops, sorry. My report is in your folder. We did pass out some peeling paint letters throughout town, around 150. We've gotten some fairly positive responses of people doing work. I don't know if you noticed in town, a lot of folks are scraping and painting and prepping the buildings for winter, so that's been a very positive product of that. And we do have one motion on the agenda, so that's all I have unless you have any questions.
All right, are there any questions for Mrs. English? Would anybody care to make the HARB motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, HARB, following its review during a meeting held on October 16, 2024, and approve the grant of a certificate of appropriateness for the following application as presented, COA-240077, major project 428, 430-432, South Washington Street, Wellspan Properties, Inc., for the demolition of two residential buildings on the same parcel for the donation of this clean site to Adams County Habitat for Humanity for the reconstruction of two new buildings, creating three total residential units, as submitted in the application dated October 7, 2024.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions about this? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything for Mrs. English? All right, thank you. That takes us to Ms. Fissell.
Good evening. You have my report. I have the graphs and charts as usual. The permits, you can see, did go up slightly. That is from the daily rate in the garage, and the LPPs are about the same. The reserved spaces in the garage are about the same. We did complete our PSP audit for the clean, and overall, you can see the parking garage is higher than it has been. And other than that, I have a motion.
All right, any questions about parking? Okay, would anybody care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to set a temporary daily rate of $18 for parking in the Borough's Racehorse Alley Parking Garage on Saturday, December 7, 2024, during a Gettysburg Christmas Festival holiday special event sponsored by Main Street Gettysburg, Inc.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any questions for Ms. Fissell? All right, thank you so much. Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening. You all should have received my report. Couple highlights on my report. Fall brush pickup was done the week of October 28. It is complete. At the end of the year, I'll have final numbers for you for how much brush was collected for the year. We started leaves this past week. There's a ton of leaves out there. We're trying to keep up with them, and it was windy today. We were trying to get the piles best we could today, but the wind seemed to want to scatter them around today. But, so we're working on leaves. We're also planting trees. And we're also setting up for the, putting the blocks out for the Remembrance Day parade, which is this Saturday. And there is a motion on my tab tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
Would you give the rules of what's accepted for the recycling events? Or the rules that any of your drop-off events have?
Would I get the rules?
Well, are there any special requirements that you have that people adhere to?
So there's really no special requirements for brush. We take brush only two weeks out of the year, and that would be the week before Memorial Day, and then a week before we start leaves. It doesn't, it's, the brush can be eight-foot lengths, can be two-inch diameter limbs, can be three-inch diameter limbs, it could be shrubs, could be potted plants. We'll take all of that, just no leaves mixed in with the brush. Now, leaves is a different story. Leaves only, no brush mixed in with the leaves, because we have a vehicle that sucks the leaves up through a tube, and when there's tree limbs in those leaves, it clogs the tube, and it takes us a while to get it unclogged every time that it happens. So that slows us up.
Thank you, Ray.
All right.
Robbie, would you tell us again, for the dump truck, why it's a smother option to buy rather than go in the repair route?
Because, and I did some investigation, the number that I gave you a couple months ago was to your go price. It's now up to like $40,000 to replace that rail, and the truck isn't worth $40,000. That's why it's better to go new.
And if you did-
More bang for the buck.
And if you did repair it, there's still not the guarantee that it's going to hold up?
That is correct. There could be other issues near future down the road with the power plant, with the engine.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anybody care to make that motion?
Sure. A motion to authorize a budget modification for fiscal year 2024 for the transfer of $57,394 from line item 01-100-100, general fund reserves, to line item 01-430-740, capital purchase machinery for the purchase of a 2024 Western Star 47X chassis dump truck. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just caught an error in the number. It should be transferred to line item 18-430-740. That would be the capital projects fund.
All right, Ms. Stull, please make the note. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Any questions for Mr. Harbaugh before we move on? All right, thank you, sir. That takes us to Mr. Claybaugh.
Good evening, council. You have a copy of my written report. The highlight in my report is with regards to the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B2 project. As you know, we've been doing a lot of construction on North Washington Street. The report, I've provided several updates on the report, and we also have a motion on your agenda for the application for payment tonight. That part of it is pretty self-explanatory. It's the second application for payment, standard procedure. They're asking to be paid for exactly what was in their contract, nothing new or different with that. So that's the easy part of this. I also gave you an update there in the report about what was complete. So far, everything on the north side of the tracks, in terms of the utilities, is basically complete, up to the boring for the railroad tracks. That is, with the exception of the sidewalk replacements that you guys just approved last month. So we got to get caught up with that. That's going to be probably done within the next couple of weeks. I also gave you an update on some of the delays from CSX, and that's really the highlight that I want to touch bases on with you today. So there's some good news, bad news with that. The bad news is that we need to push the boring back until the first two weeks of January at this point. That was primarily due to getting CSX flaggers to be staffed for this project. We just couldn't get them mobilized from, they come in from out of state, and this is, the soonest they could do it was essentially the first week of December. And whenever they picked that date, then we immediately saw the conflict with our Christmas Festival and Gettysburg College finals. So we didn't want to have this loud boring happening while, you know, the Gettysburg College students were trying to study for their finals. So the good news here is if we pick the first two weeks of January, the college is still out. So it won't affect any of the college students. It's after the holidays. The other, the other good news with this is CSX seems to be, and this is kind of a little bit premature to make this decision right now. I don't have this finalized yet, but all signs are pointing to us being able to do boring on 10-hour days instead of continuous through the night. If you can remember, I reported that on Stratton Street, that's what we had to do. But we hit a lot of rocks so far on this project. So that's also, you know, a double-edged sword. A lot of rock costs a lot of money to remove, but at the same time, CSX is a little bit more forgiving when in terms of those overnight boring because the rock is stable. The train tracks aren't going to move whenever you're boring through rocks. So they will allow us to stop the borings from day to day and not do them continuous overnight. So that should be, you know, good news for the property owners and the students and everybody that's around there. It's not going to be so loud at nighttime. Again, I have to confirm that with CSX, but that's what all signs are pointing towards. And I wanted to note, too, that I have, this is the first time that I'm making the public announcement that we are moving the boring, that we would like to move this boring until the first two weeks of January. Now, depending on if, any feedback tonight, we'll have to give them a work directive change to extend their contract time. The original contract deadline was, we were hoping to get it done by Christmas holiday, mid-December, so it would have to take a contract extension that we'll have to approve. I intend to have that on your agenda meeting, at your December meeting, for approval. But we would need to give them an indication that we are going to approve that in advance of that. So what we do is a work directive change, basically promising them that we're going to extend their contract. But tonight, again, is the first time I've made a public announcement on this. I haven't talked to, and kind of what I mean by that is I haven't talked to any of the property owners yet. Like Antique Pizza, The Florist Shop, some of the folks that are primarily affected by that overnight boring and the street closure associated with it. So again, I think that it should be good news to them, knowing that we're going to wait till after the holidays to do this, whenever things are kind of pretty slow.
With the reduced daily hours, do they still feel like they can do the work in 10 days? Or does it extend the timeframe?
So it will still be about 10 days. It would just not include the weekend. So they originally planned on up to 10 days, and of course, you're not, if you're not boring through the night, the number of days is probably going to be added a couple. But what they're looking at doing now is is five days the first week, and then a few days the second week, but not bore straight through the weekend. So it'll probably add a couple of days, but they still think they can get it done within those 10 days.
And how do these changes, how are they projected to affect the overall cost of the project?
So the change to the delay in the time doesn't have any effect. The change to the rock could potentially have an effect. It's still too early to tell exactly how much rock. There's still a lot of excavation pipe work that has to happen on the south side of the railroad tracks. So we're keeping track of rock as they excavate it. That could have a potential impact on it. There has also been, I don't know, half a dozen different pipes that we've hit over the days I've reported on the last couple of months. Each time that they hit a pipe and it stalls their work, we've been tracking those hours and the time and costs associated with it. So I have a calculation of all of those things that I've been keeping track of. There's some overages, there's some underage. There's a few items that we're not going to need, some things that we saved some money on. So it's a little early to tell exactly how, what impact it's going to have on the overall contract. But I hope to have something to report to you by your December meeting on kind of where I think we're going to fall in terms of the end price.
One would, pardon me, one would think if they're not working through the night, there would be a savings of overtime and triple time and...
I can certainly request that.
No, I'm just curious. I'm not-
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for?
No, I can, I can tell you that on our end, there, so, not associated with the contractor's contract. On our end, we have professional services that we provide in terms of inspection, monitor, survey of the railroad tracks, those kind of things. We won't need to have those overnight. So that will be definitely a savings, an overtime type of a savings from our end of the things. I'm just not sure about from the contractor's end.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about that? Would anybody have any opposition to supporting moving that work into the beginning of January if it were brought up in a later meeting? Okay.
I think it's, certainly for local businesses, it's better.
Yeah.
It's after the holidays, and that's kind of a little bit of a downtime, so, yeah, I think that works well.
That sounds like a pretty good plan.
Sounds good. And I think the only other thing that I have to update you on is, so, as I reported earlier, this project's actually three phases. The first phase is the utility work, and then the next two phases is putting all the curb and sidewalk back, and that has to happen in two different parts. One for the CDBG, one for the C2P2, the DCNR money. The next phase of this, we just advertised for the bids for it, so that's live right now on PennBid. We're expecting bids in about two weeks, and I'll have bid results ready for you to make a decision on at your December meeting, and then we'll follow up the following month with the C2P2 bids for the DCNR money. So those will be happening over the next, the course of the next two months, and then we can finalize all of the sidewalk replacements in the spring.
Great. All right, any questions about all that?
Just one. When did you say the businesses, the affected businesses, would be notified about the change, the pushback time?
So I intend to notify them as soon as I get a confirmation from CSX on these dates. Again, all signs are pointing towards yes. Robbie and Charles have been copied on a lot of the correspondence with them. It sounds like they're finally on board with this new updates, but I don't want to make a promise and then be wrong about it, so I'm kind of announcing this on TV tonight, so it's public knowledge at this point. But I do want to make sure that I'm crossing some t's and dotting some i's before I finalize that conversation.
Absolutely, thank you.
Sure.
All right, would anybody care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application for payment number two to York Excavating Company in the amount of $168,935.25 for the North Washington Street Water and Storm Project as recommended by Borough Engineer.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you, sir. That takes us to Chief Glenny. Can you pull your mic closer?
You all have my report. As with the others, I would just point out we're up on every number, with the exception of crashes or over last year's totals, with the exception of crashes, unfortunately, being up over last year's totals on a lot of these things. And we will, unless something miraculous happens, surpass our last year's crash numbers as well. But just pointing that out, we're in the process of gearing up for Remembrance Day this weekend and getting everything in order for that. Outside of that, I would answer any questions anybody might have.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? All right, thank you, sir. That takes us to the Office of the Manager and Treasurer. Secretary Stull.
Okay, you have my report in your packets there, the only thing. Deborah English celebrates a five-year anniversary this month.
Congratulations.
Excellent, excellent.
That's all I have.
Manager Gable.
I always like to highlight the financial condition of the Borough each month. Year-to-date, revenues are in excess of expenditures of $827,000. That's largely due to the use of ARPA funds reimbursing salaries per council's directive. I expect that number to hold through the end of the year. It might even tick up a little bit because we still have $113,000 appropriated in ARPA funds for this year's general fund budget. The Borough has $3.7 million in the general fund checking account. Just over a million of that is earmarked for reserves, so we're in good condition there. I would say that this is a rather high number, $3.7 million. If you take out the million for reserves, you're at $2.7 million. Again, that is all due to the use of ARPA funds over the last couple of years. In the workshop session this coming two weeks, I think it's the 25th, I'm going to have a discussion point on transferring about $1.5 million of these reserves to capital projects in anticipation of the new Highway Shed project that we are embarking on. So we'll have that discussion in a couple- So we'll have that discussion in a couple of weeks. Other than that, all the other funds are status quo, solvent, and in good condition. Other than that, I have several motions under our tab, unless you have questions.
All right. Any questions for the manager? All right, let's start working our way through those motions. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have a motion to appoint Mayor Duzel as our accounting auditors.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 111224-2, appointing Mayor Duzel, a firm of certified public accountants registered with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as the independent auditor of the Borough of Gettysburg effective during and for fiscal 2025 in order to make an independent examination of the accounting records of the borough for fiscal year 2024 and to perform such other duties and to exercise the powers as conferred upon an independent auditor under the Borough Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? This is, for those watching at home, this is not a change. This is an annual thing. We have to appoint our auditors annually. We've been working with this firm for many years and getting consistently excellent results from them. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we have the motion to advertise the budget.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Borough Secretary Sarah Elstall to give notice and to cause the same to be published that the proposed budget, providing an annual estimate of revenues and an annual estimate of expenditures for fiscal year 2025, has been prepared and will be made available for public inspection for a period of not less than 10 days commencing on Monday, November 25, 2024, and ending at the close of business on Monday, December 9, 2024, prior to the completion and adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2025 by the Borough Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Bales. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The fee resolution.
I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation and finalization of a proposed resolution for consideration of intended adoption in the next monthly general business meeting of the Borough Council to be held on Monday, December 9, 2024 for the purposes of setting, updating, and confirming the borough's fees and charges for the issuances, issuance of licenses, permits, and the provision of municipal services in and during fiscal year 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. The millage.
I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare, finalize, and publish a proposed ordinance for consideration of intended enactment at the next monthly general business meeting of the Borough Council to be held on December 9, 2024 for the purposes of fixing the real property rate, tax rate for the Borough of Gettysburg for fiscal year 2025 at 4.5566 mils, occupation tax rate at 3.0 mils, and the fire protection services appropriations tax rate at .5000 mils.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I heard Mr. Carr first. Is there any discussion about the millage rates? For those watching at home, this does represent a modest tax increase. We have known this was coming for a couple of years. We made the decision to add police positions and those cost money. And at the end of the day, we only have a few, very few ways to pay for the things we want to do. And so unfortunately, we do have to start adjusting that millage rate for the average homeowner in Gettysburg. If your home is assessed around $250,000, this increase would work out to approximately $9 a month for you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And then we have the Main Street motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 111224-3 for the purpose of supporting the grant application of Main Street Gettysburg, Inc. to the Main Street Matters Program of the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, in the amount of $50,000 for use in the continued operation of the facade improvement program of Main Street Gettysburg. Charles R. Gable, MPA, Borough Manager, is authorized as the Borough official to execute and deliver all documents and agreements on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg in order to facilitate and assist Main Street Gettysburg in obtaining the requested grant funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a HARB appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph Edgar Jr. to the Gettysburg Historic, Historical Architectural Review Board HARB in order to complete the term of Joan Hodges, which will expire in August 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make note that my colleague Judith Butterfield and I co-chair the ABCs and we're pleased that, to put Joe Edgar's name forward, he's a, an architect, in, a young architect in, in the community and interned when he was a student at Penn State with Gary Schaefer. He attended a number of HARB meetings over the years, both as an intern and as a young employee. So we're pleased to put his name forth. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And thank you to Mr. Edgar for helping us with that initiative. That takes us to our liaison reports and we'll start with Main Street Gettysburg.
Good evening, everyone. A few things to talk about tonight. First, thank you for your support on this facade application that will go forward and we'll keep our fingers crossed that that money will be available so we can continue that program in support of our downtown businesses. It had quite an impact in 2023 and 24, so hopefully we can continue that going forward. The Wayside Marker Project, 44 markers, four of which are brand-new. We've got 25 of them in and, and the rest are in the works. There, those four, we're waiting on the bases, so they are on special order and they will come and probably be installed in the new year. We're also working on a walking tour map of those, of those markers, so stay tuned for, for that opportunity. On October 17, I was assisted ably by Public Works to install a memorial bench for Dr. Peter Carmichael on Lincoln Square. So please take note of that special placement and my thanks to the donors that made that happen so quickly. Elm Street. Elm Street, I have a great announcement to make in that we are making progress. We have a planning grant that was issued. We were very fortunate to have great support from the community to, to, to collect $25,000 in matching funds for, and we were granted a $25,000 grant for planning for Elm Street. So been working with Dirk and Edson and, as well as the local committee that has been reviewing Elm Street, the original Elm Street from 2008, its accomplishments, its goals at that point, looking to see, you know, what needs to change, what does the neighborhood look like now, what does it need going forward. So the next step for that is a public meeting, November the 19th at 6:30, right here in Borough Council chambers. The public is invited. We'll be reviewing surveys that went out, taking a look at all of the things, the feedback that's come from the community, asking for more feedback and participation from the neighborhood as well as for, from borough residents. So please mark your calendars and join us here. The Gettysburg Welcome Center, we continue to, of course, work on that huge project. We're working towards the $100,000 Wareheim Grant Challenge. Part of that is going to be our proceeds from the Giving Spree. So many, many thanks and a shout-out to everyone that supported us for that. Fingers crossed for December 13th where we have that big reveal and hopefully it'll be a, a nice, a nice addition to, to working towards that $100,000 challenge grant. So, but $3.1 million exceeded the Giving Spree goal as a total. So I think this is a remarkable comment on the generosity of this county in support of our nonprofits. So thank you all who donated. And last but not least, the Giving Spree is in 24 days, in case anybody is counting, as always. What did I say? The Giving Spree? Oh, see, I don't know what day it is. So, yes, 24 days until Christmas. Yes, the season of giving. Thank you, Chad, for the correction. So my thanks to sponsors, partners, volunteers, the Borough of Gettysburg, and everyone that is pulling this all together. Lots of things going on this year. So our foundation kind of remains the same, but, you know, we're continuing to add new things so that it's a new experience for people every year because we have a lot of return visitors. So a quick laundry list. Ice Avenue, a big shout-out to North Baltimore Street businesses. 19 ice sculptures are going to be in place, including a live ice sculpture carving on Saturday morning, so don't miss that. Two foosball, human foosball cords, one on Lincoln Square, one on Steinware Avenue. Live reindeer, a mechanical reindeer, bounce houses, face painting, carriages, and all sorts of live music on Steinware Avenue. Breakfast with Santa, thanks to the United Way and Ragged Edge up at the Seminary. The Seminary is one of the shuttle stops and they are doing some great things in Seminary Ridge Museum as well, so stay tuned for that. The gingerbread celebration at the Arts Council is a huge draw. They were amazed at the number of visitors that they had last year and their building was under construction last year in really, you know, transitional shape. One of their favorite comments from the survey that followed last year's Christmas Festival is from a lady that said, "I had such a great time in that almost condemned building." So this year, it's going to look fabulous when they have their gingerbread celebration in their new space. We're doing an elf hunt this year, so businesses are sponsoring elves in their spaces. We're working with the local, a local decorator here and so it's going to be a scavenger hunt thing, prizes at the end, really increase foot traffic to our businesses. We're excited about something a little different for, to get people around town. Living historians, roasted chestnuts, pictures with Santa, hot chocolate smores and all sorts of sugar. Entertainment on four stages this year. Really excited that we're working with the Gettysburg Foundation at the Children of 1863 Museum, so there'll be an additional stage there. Santa, pictures, crafts, food, food everywhere. And the food is, food trucks mostly local as much as possible and that is only done so that we can really augment our restaurants that, that are filled to capacity every Christmas Festival weekend, so that we can keep people fed and moving around. Musicians, magicians, dance troops, other kids groups. Finding Nemo the Musical will be that weekend. A Christmas Carol will be at the Majestic for the first time on Christmas Festival weekends, so we're excited to be working with Totem Pole and the Majestic. And drumroll, The Christmas Movie, tickets are for sale at the Majestic, so that is finally available. They are selling fast, so if you have not seen it or want to see it again, please go online to the Majestic and get your tickets. The Festival Tavern, thanks to six local establishments, we're going to have a nice tent downtown with, with beverages there and entertainment, heaters and things to stop, get warmed up and then find your way around the rest of the festival. And finally, a shout-out to any business that isn't involved, please give me a call and we will figure out how to make that happen, but you got to be quick. We're 24 days and counting and keep your fingers crossed for good weather. If you have questions, I'll take them.
All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Carr, Garab.
I don't have much to report because I have not yet had a sit-down with the new executive director who introduced himself to all of us. If you didn't already know Al Moyer before, he is now the new executive director at the Rec Park. The Rec Park has a Garab board meeting on Sunday evening.
All right. Mr. Berger, GMA.
Our budget meeting was the same evening as the GMA meeting, so was not able to make that, so no report tonight.
All right. Mrs. Butterfield, the bid.
As Jill Sellers just reported, she gave a very extensive and complete report on what's coming up for the Christmas Festival and especially accented and invited Steinware merchants to actively participate. We hope to have 100% participation of the merchants of Steinware in the Christmas Festival this year.
All right. Mayor Freeling, Akba.
Thank you. The next meeting will be on November 18th and we're going to have a presentation on solar use and farming. And also Mayor Harris from Carroll Valley will be talking about cybersecurity. And then after that, the next meeting will be in January.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Lawson, Happy.
Happy met this evening at 5:30 and we discussed a feasibility study that Happy is going to put together and we're looking for some grants to help us with that in terms of looking at additional trail work. We've been working closely with the borough in terms of the Gettysburg interlude, but we're looking beyond that, more out in Adams County. We also have a couple openings on the Happy Board, that's Healthy Adams Pedestrian and Bicycle Group, so anyone out there, walkers or bicyclists or people interested in trails, we'd encourage you to get in touch with, well, you can get in touch with me and I can pass your name on if, if you're interested in serving on that. They meet monthly. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Butterfield, Akbo.
Yes, Akbo had a busy meeting. The, they're stressing improvement of shoulders, emphasizing safety for bikes and buggies. That will be a main focus of their traffic improvement plan, which they are working on and will be distributing and the Borough Secretary will receive a copy of that when it is ready to be mailed.
All right, thank you. Mr. Berger, the trail feasibility study.
Nothing to report.
All right. Mrs. Butterfield, recycling.
Yes, twice a year, we like to invite our contracted hauler, whoever that might be, to come and for a sit-down, question-answer period, information exchange, and we had that this month. They sent, Waste Management sent three representatives, which we were pleased and a lot of information changed hands. Staff members, Deborah English and Rob Harbaugh attended. Did you all think it was informative and useful? I, I think it's a valuable thing. Not only do we, are we assured of the information that we have about recycling and trash contracts is accurate, but it also shows our hauler that we're paying attention, that we are interested in, in the agreement and we're following along and I think it's a beneficial thing to do.
All right, thank you. We have the Fire Department report in our folders. I did not see EMS. Those, that's there for you to review. It takes us to elected officials' comments. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
Yes, I participated in Veterans Day events yesterday. One was at James Gettys Elementary School and it was absolutely wonderful. And Daniel Bigel, who was in the Marines, he was the speaker. And it was really neat because his mother is the librarian at the school, so they had a talk thing between, it was like a CBS interview. It was cute. And the kids participated. And then I went down to the American Legion for the Veterans Day Celebration there and Staff Sergeant Phasen Baker, who graduated from Gettysburg High School in 1967, was the speaker there. It was just very nice to be a part of that. This morning, I went to a Juneteenth meeting that they're getting together. It's all like in the planning stages to celebrate Juneteenth this year and that will be on June 21st. It's a Saturday. So we're just in the planning stages of that. And the next meeting of the Gettysburg Joint Veterans Memorial Day Committee will be on January 21st. Veterans Memorial Day Committee will be on January 15. And it's going to be interesting to see what we do this year because USS Gettysburg is out to sea. So I plan to contact them to see if they will be back in time for the Memorial Day Parade. I met with college students and it went really well, well attended. We had a great time. And for anybody who needs it, I had two fraternities that offered to volunteer for things to do in the borough.
The Christmas Festival.
No, I already told her.
If they're still here.
No, if they're, no, but they'll be, if they're here or you can use them before, but they volunteered. And I thought that was very kind of them. They said, "If we need anything and help with anything, Charles, Sarah," they said, "call them." I thought that was very nice. Remembrance Day this weekend, I'll be participating in a ceremony at the Lincoln Cemetery. And I think that's all I have for now, unless I forgot something easy to do. Thank you.
Any other elected officials' comments? All right. That takes us to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items appearing on the agenda, but we do ask you to limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium and please state your name and address of residence. All right. Seeing no public comment, we are adjourned.